Children to reach their full potential.
Mr. Brooks, could you read the statement honoring Native American land, please?
We Forest Park Board of Education would like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on the traditional lands of the Peoria, Parowatami, Mi'amia, Sioux, and Kikapu people, and pay our respects to elders both past and present.
Thank you. Number four consent agenda items for the board. Is there anything anyone would like removed? Okay, may have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lyons.
Hi.
Ms. Angelo.
Hi.
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Rommel.
Aye.
Ms. Wood.
Aye. Number five correspondence? No correspondence. Okay, we have no correspondence. Matters of consideration from the public? Okay, cruising right along then. Number seven superintendent's report.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna start off with recognitions with our day of service. So thank you to our PTO, particularly Rochelle Ernst, community members, partners, families, staff, and students who participated in our day of service at Grant White. It truly was a wonderful day, and despite the cold outside, the warmth inside was undeniable. As Dr. King said, everybody can be great because everybody can serve. A shout out to our VP, Katanyancy, for volunteering on this day. Give some more of the pictures here. Future city competition. Congratulations to 7th grade Challenge Program students who did an outstanding job presenting at the National Engineering Week Future City Event in Chicago on Saturday, January 18th. This year's Future Cities theme was Above the Current, and the challenge was to design a floating city 100 years in the future that addresses sea level rise and provides two innovative examples of how the floating city works and keeps its citizens healthy and safe. For their project, students researched the rising sea levels brought on by climate change and developed a floating city solution that would prevent the displacement of people and at the same time protect coral reefs with innovative construction materials. The students created goals, a project plan, and a schedule to meet deadlines. After writing a paper detailing their solutions, students -- I think I have more pictures. Nope, that's it. After writing papers detailing their efficiency and safety elements, students interacted with over 35 professional engineers across many different sectors as they presented and responded to questions about their city model, features, and solutions. Students received two awards: Excellence in Transportation, Safety in Operations, from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Illinois Section, and Most Innovative Structure from the Structural Engineers Association of Illinois. They displayed their city during STEAM night on January 23rd. And the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB, commends President Wood and Board Member Kira Tyler for their efforts toward continuous learning and professional development through IASB's 2024 Board Leader Recognition Program. ISB will acknowledge your accomplishments by recognizing them at the upcoming West Cook Division Meeting as they attain the level of established. Congratulations. Our annual spelling bee is more than just a competition. It's a celebration of learning, confidence, and the joy of words. Nothing brings a bigger smile than seeing our students shine as they take the stage letter by letter, proving that hard work and determination spell success. In D-91, we believe in our students. This year's champ was Zoe Giddings with the champion word of Morpheus. Priority number one, learning and achievement. This month I will be highlighting 6th and 8th grade, starting with perfect attendance awards at FPMS. At Forest Park Middle School, we proudly recognize students who achieve perfect attendance during Quarter 1, Quarter 2, or both, with a special breakfast celebration. Their parents and caregivers were also invited to share in this joyous occasion, honoring the student's commitment to showing up every day. Why is attendance so important? Consistent attendance is a key factor in academic success. Being present every day ensures that students stay engaged in learning, build strong relationships with their teachers and peers, and develop responsible habits that will benefit them throughout their lives. Every school day is an opportunity to learn, grow, and prepare for the future. We commend our students for their dedication and perseverance, their hard work and commitment to learning and inspiring all of us. FPMS small groups. In Mr. Gutierrez's ELA class, he tailors his instruction to keep his students engaged. His scholars are diving into our new Amplify ELA curriculum. Mr. Gutierrez is implementing the differentiation features to support their unique learning needs. And this is our AI curriculum. Here you can see the AI literacy curriculum. In the next pictures, I will show you what our students were on. I'll leave that up for a little bit. So it's four weeks. Ethics and AI is the first week. Moving on to AI core concepts, creativity in AI, and AI career futures. In these pictures, students are on Week 1 Ethics and AI. Mrs. Rajoria sparks innovation and steam as she introduces our scholars to the world of AI. Her hands-on exploration and curiosity-driven learning activities are just the beginning. And these are just examples of some posters that our children are writing regarding the ethics of AI. Scholars in 7th and 8th grade math collaborating on math and STEAM activities. They're taking ownership of their learning, sharing ideas, and checking their work, and holding each other accountable. And these are some of the pictures of them in math and STEAM. Here our students work together to solve math problems collaboratively. They give each other suggestions and some guidance.
Two S.
That's an eight.
What's the exponent?
Two.
Twenty-four.
All right.
Anything that's in.
Sixty-four divided by twenty-four.
So guys.
This is sixty-four.
Ninety-five.
It's not a twenty-five.
That's a minus.
That's four.
So this should be.
Divided by C.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four divided by twenty-four.
It was kind of fun seeing them go through that. Mr. Maui in his class used technology to explore molecules in motion through the OpenSci Ed simulation program. Students visualize how molecules behave at various temperatures, allowing them to engage in interactive, hands-on learning that deepens their understanding of science concepts and fosters critical thinking. And here in picture one, students try to figure out how a two-way mirror works. Here they use a model to see which side can see through to the other. Picture two, students are creating a 3D model, showing what they initially know how eyes function. And picture three, students experiment with light to understand terms as transmission and reflection, and how they relate to the two-way mirror. Picture one, students try different ingredients as they attempt to answer the question, which ingredients make bath bombs react in water? And picture two, students work on visualizing how a chemical reaction happens within a bath bomb at the atomic level using paper models. And in picture three, students use their knowledge to create their own bath bomb using the ingredients they have researched. Moving on to 6th grade math interventions and ELA. In Ms. Haddar's class, Haddar's class, it's all hands on deck. Our Panthers teachers, Ms. Vasco and Mr. Vidalis, step in to provide one-on-one support to 6th grade ELLIS students whenever they're not subbing. Meanwhile, Mrs. Joel's interventions class takes a hands-on approach using base 10 manipulatives to master multiplying two- and three-digit numbers. Collaboration, creativity are fueling success. And here in picture one, 6th grade students try to figure out what makes certain cups better at insulating temperatures than others. Here they diagram the different phases of matter outside and inside a cup. Picture two, after weeks of various tests, students attempt to create insulated cups. And in picture three, students provide reasoning for making specific cups. On January 23rd, our FPMS students were able to exhibit their STEAM talent. You were able -- we were able to see their innovation through science, technology, engineering, art, and math, and it was a fun time for all, and we are very proud of all of them. And you could see the picture of all of them together there. And then finally, before I bring them up, this is our 8th grade ambassadors. So research strongly supports the benefits of older children reading to younger children, both academically and socially. Studies show that when older students, students like D-91's 8th grade ambassadors, read to younger peers, it enhances literacy skills, fosters confidence, and cultivates a love of reading in both groups. For younger children, hearing fluent readers model expressive reading helps develop their vocabulary, comprehension, and enthusiasm for books. They also build meaningful connections with older students, making reading an exciting, engaging experience. For the 8th graders, reading aloud strengthens their own literacy skills, deepens their sense of responsibility, and enhances leadership abilities. Research also suggests that mentoring relationships foster empathy and a sense of community, reinforcing a culture where reading is not just an academic task but a shared and joyful experience. D-91's 8th grade ambassadors program embodies these powerful connections, proving that reading is more than words on a page. It's about building bridges between students, fostering leadership, and instilling a lifelong love of learning. And now we'll have some of our 8th grade ambassadors share their experience. We have Nora, Caleb, Grace, Lyden, and Phoenix. And with them, we have both of their coaches, Ms. Alman and Ms. Chardulo.
Flowers to deliver. So thank you, Lyden. So this is our third year of the program. You know, I give kudos to Mrs. Chardulo. When we came together as an ELA committee, we were looking at ways to kind of renovate, restore our classroom libraries. And Dr. Alvarez and Mr. Adler brought in, you know, kind of these Rising Voices, you know, libraries that our committee just fell in love with. However.
However, the Rising Voices libraries only go up to 5th grade. So I looked at the books, and honestly, they were great books. I happened to be flipping through a couple of them as they were going through the books and talking about how to use them in classes and how to frame their classwork around this, how to introduce them for the week. And I said, why don't we use the 8th graders to read these to the kids? Get them out into the community, get them into the classrooms, use them as reader leaders. And Mrs. Alman and Scholastic ran with the idea. And I do believe it's becoming a Scholastic program now, isn't it?
You know, I think we've been launching that and kind of being a model. D-91 has been a model for that.
The Scholastic is mimicking us, and you were just first to start it. So they will be doing that in Scholastics.
Yeah, so then that will be nationwide because of something that we started here in Forest Park.
So we started our first read aloud in November, and what's really cool is the students, they get the idea of, they get to select the text. They could just select the school, the teacher. Many of them have siblings, neighbors, cousins, family, friends within other schools, so it's pretty exciting to go back to the school. So I was gonna let them, you know, Lyden, would you want to be, were you willing to tell where you went, what you read?
So I used to go to Betsy Ross, and going there was pretty nostalgic for me. I love meeting the old teachers I had and meeting the new students that would go to our school now. I mean, that's pretty cool, seeing what they would grow up to be, like us. And I love reading the books to them, and it's pretty like amazing to see that they'll be there soon, reading the same books to the students again, you know what I mean?
And they definitely asked you some good questions.
Yeah, they asked a lot of questions, like what middle school was like, I mean, what do you learn, how the teachers were, how fun it is, I mean.
They wanted the whole schedule.
Yeah, everything.
Thank you, Lyden, very much. Nora, you want to come up? Thank you.
Hi, haven't been here in a hot minute. Hi. I personally enjoy this program because when I was younger, a lot of the older kids didn't want anything to do with me. One of them really didn't like me. And I remember that that was always something that I took to heart, and I was always very sad about because I wanted so desperately for approval from them, and I never got that. And to be able to give that to these kids meant so much to me, and to give that to my brother, who's over there, but he's kind of pouting right now. But it was awesome being able to see them and see my old teachers and the new teachers who took my past teachers' places. It was, it was great. I am so grateful that I got to do this, so thank you. I read to my youngest brother, Max. He's in 1st grade. Yeah.
That's great. And Caleb, come up. Tell us where you read, because you kind of had a similar experience too. Who did you get to read to?
I got to read to my sister, who's in 4th grade, in Ms. Conwell's class.
Friend, and they did such animation. The coolest part is the students also, they wrote a lesson plan. So we're kind of homegrown, building our profession. Hopefully, we have some future teachers in here. Grace, I'm just gonna pull you up here a second. You don't have to say anything. Can I just put, she did such a fantastic job. And Caleb, their lesson plans were amazing. So they had to choose vocabulary words that we thought maybe would stump the students. So we kind of gave them pre-taught some of those words. They had to come up with questions before, during, and after. We kind of had that interactive read aloud. And then I loved it because Caleb, you guys even had some onomatopoeia. You had some words that imitated sounds, and so we even used academic language. So I think we have some future teachers here and, you know, giving back. And I know we have some students in the, they keep asking in the K-5 classrooms, when are they coming back? So, very, very cool. So, thank you. Thank you for having me. Very much. I'm gonna say some. So we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Aw, Caleb.
That was really sweet.
Thank you, guys. Thank you again to Ms. Alman and to Ms. Chardulo. Honestly, this program is what it is because of you guys, so bravo. And thank you to our students who came and spoke. I know that sometimes it's a little hard and intimidating, so thank you. All right. All right. I'm gonna start moving on to our Winter Fastbridge Growth data. All right. As we normally see, I mentioned that when you see green, we want to see green. Obviously, we want to be pushing to the blue, but we see that each one of our schools in math received a green expected growth. If we move on to this, we see the graph form. You will see in blue, each school's expected in high growth, and in brown, the MET benchmark. All our schools are above 80% for growth for early math and A math. As we move on here, you will see grade levels, which are all in green as well. In the bar graph, how each grade level did here. Once again, the blue shows the expected and high growth, and the brown, the MET benchmark. And you will see that we're above the 80s for the math growth. This is for student groups, and we're happy to see two blues and all greens. The blues are from our emergent bilingual students and our Asian student population. And this is what it looks like in bar graph form. Please let me know if you need me to slow down if you want to look at it a little deeper. Now on to reading. All of our schools are as well in the green, so as expected. And here we'll see how our school's blue bar shows expected and high growth. Fields, Stevenson, and Garfield almost making the 80 percentile, reminding everyone that we did just get a new ELLIS curriculum, and it is much more rigorous. So I'm glad to see that our children are getting acquainted with this. They have mentioned that they really like the curriculum. The more we're pushing with it, the more we should see these grow. And if we move on to grade level, this shows our 2nd and 3rd graders receive lower than expected, so we have some yellow here. And then the bar graphs by grade provides the blue, expected and high growth, all 80% or above, and our brown bars are MET benchmark. This slide is our reading growth by student group. You will see the majority of our students are in the green. We do have lower than expected for our students with IEP, and red for unhoused students. This is the bar graph for the student group, for the reading group of growth. And then finally, if we look at our big picture from our strategic plan, this is where we are for our growth goals from Winter Fastbridge, reminding that our big picture is saying that we want to be at 80%, and we've reached it with reading and in math at 86%. Moving on to family, community engagement. Here in December, we provided a survey to all our families. There were 15 questions asked based on a Likert scale from 1 to 5, 5 being strongly in agreement, and our average score from all the questions was 4.25. 88.03% of parents would recommend D-91 as a good place for their child to learn, and 89.66% of parents and caregivers recommend their child's school as a good place for learning. Overall, we are showing excellent performance, and our goal is to sustain. This is a great predictor for our upcoming 5E survey that the Illinois Report Card uses. And as a reminder, the 5 essential surveys scheduled from February 18th to March 31st, we still not have gotten the links, but those will be coming out soon. And we are looking forward to turning all our areas green, since they're right now a little tannish, moving them on to the green. And then mark your calendars for the 2025 Forest Park Education Summit, Empowering All: Unlocking Student Potential Through Collaborative Learning. On Saturday, March 22nd, we will bring together educators, families, and community members for a day of learning, networking, and action, featuring interactive workshops, a resource fair, and the inaugural FACE Awards, where we will honor outstanding contributions to student success by recognizing a pillar of support, our parents and our guardians, an ally in education, community partner, and a champion of education, an educator from each building. and a champion of education, an educator from each building. Nominations are due by March first, so you have time to nominate someone. And our third priority of tailoring recruitment and development. We are on the cusp of becoming a truly innovative district as we begin to shape our new strategic plan, particularly in our vision for technology. As Principal Watson, Principal Bogdan, and I attended the summit, we returned with valuable insights and clear next steps. The biggest question we must address is what do we want teachers to know, believe, and do regarding AI-enabled instruction? And how does this inform our instructional vision? What is it that we want our students to know as they prepare for the twenty-second century? It's essential to remember that our kindergarteners are the class of twenty thirty-three, here at D ninety-one, and twenty thirty-seven from high school. They will be growing up in a world where AI is the norm. We also tackled the common concern, but what about cheating? This question has surfaced repeatedly throughout history, with the introduction of Cliff Notes, calculators, computers, the internet, Google, and now AI. The key is not to fear these advancements, but to understand how they can be leveraged for deeper learning. The following quotes shed light on where our focus should be. I'll read them aloud. Trying to figure out where the human ends and the AI begins is pointless and futile. This is by Sarah Elaine Eason, University of Calgary. If the concern is that students could cheat, it's worth remembering that they could cheat six months ago and sixty years ago. The Chronicle of Higher Education. We should just get used to the fact that we won't be able to reliably tell if a document is either written by AI or partially written by AI or edited by AI or by humans. We should adapt our education system to not police the use of AI models, but basically embrace it to help students to use it and learn from it. And this was Professor Fazey from Washington Post. Now, our goal is to plan the next steps to get everyone AI-ready. We have already taken critical strides with our policy and AI curriculum. And now we must build on this foundation to ensure teachers, students, and the entire district are prepared to navigate and maximize, maximize AI's, AI's potential in education. So we're really hoping at the next strategic plan that we could really spell out, what does that look like in District ninety-one? Any questions? Yes?
Just one real quick on that, on that last. When you're, when you say, excuse me, you're thinking about what AI looks like, do you mean what AI tools you're gonna be using in the, or what, what sorts of curricula you're going to need to implement in order to get students ready to be able to, understand, evaluate, perhaps even become developers of or intelligent users of AI? Is it both?
It's, it's really both, because AI is changing so quickly as I speak right now. But right now, we really want them to understand, like, what is it, how to be careful with it, cautious with it. So that's why we have the curriculum right now. There may be things that we may not be thinking about. So that's gonna be part of it, like, are we gonna be bringing it down to fifth grade as well versus just eighth grade? AI is already being used in a lot of different ways, from, from the phones, from GPS. So we just need our children to understand how it's being utilized, and then how they can start thinking about careers in AI that have not even been thought of as of right now, as well as, um, jobs that are being eliminated because of AI. So. Thank you. And for FOIA, uh, we had two. We had a FOIA request for any proposals and contracts related to the infrastructure and charging stations for electric buses to be installed at Grant White or one forty-seventh Circle Avenue, um, by Michael Demet, Demetrico, I can't say his last name. And then the Illinois Retired Teacher Association requests the contact information of certified staff who are planning to retire in twenty twenty-five. And that completes.
Thank you. Uh, number eight committee reports, board policy, Mr. Brooks, Ms. Angelo?
Sort of a partial meeting. I know Dr. Alvarez and Ms. Angelo met and they discussed some policy. I was not able to make it just because of occupational concerns. But I think the, the big thing that we're continuing is discussion of the AI policy. It's probably the fastest-moving policy that we have, um, discussed, really, since I've been on policy committee and, and, uh, with Steve. And, and so the, although we're talking about a lot of great ideas that are coming out of the AI policy, I think structurally it remains the same. There's a thirteen-year-old age limit as far as utilization of it within our school district, um, but there is a lot of imagination about the potential of it, whether it be in ethics conversations in classrooms or things of that nature. So, policy has not shifted much, but there's a lot of discussion.
There was some tweaks to it, but we do wanna continue to bring it up every year, um, because it's changing so quickly. We also discussed, uh, Policy five-two-thirty, Maintaining Student Discipline. Um, and that one, we're just leaving this policy because we actually changed it last year, uh, adopting some changes into it. We also had Policy five-ninety, Abuse and Neglected Child Reporting, um, where we said everyone must report. We changed that word to must. And then the six-sixty curriculum content, um, where it spoke about handwriting, we had a change in there. So we're suggesting leaving those unchanged because we just did those last year. AI policy that Mr. Brooks just mentioned, a lot of changes that are probably gonna be happening. And then, um, the next one was just our bundle of one seventeen, the rest of them just being accepted.
Thank you. Uh, CAC, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Lyons?
So we did not meet for the CAC committee since the last, and that is because the CAC has shipped to that quarterly content. So that's why we didn't.
Thank you. Finance, uh, Mr. Lyons, Ms. Angelo?
Uh, we met this past Monday. Uh, we got an opportunity to chat a little bit about, uh, upcoming retirements, uh, how we forecasted, and what our actuals came in in the past, and kind of how he's doing some of the modeling going forward. Uh, we tackled a little bit on some construction updates. He was, uh, Mr. Hibbit was working on getting some proposals in, he's got some. I had to do some reviewing and, uh, some, uh, modifications and some things that he was gonna go back for, for clarification. Um, I'm not gonna steal his thunder, we did get a first glimpse of the quarter two financial report, which will be shared tonight. So, um, I'm gonna bypass that a little bit. Forecasting, modeling, uh, for upcoming years for, uh, for different things that we may need in the future. So, um, a lot of great work that's being done, so.
Uh, PPC, uh, the only thing we talked about was, was the feedback from the teachers about the calendar, and that was included in our board packet, um, so you all have that. And then superintendent evaluation, Mr. Romo?
So we have all the evaluations, uh, in. The only remaining thing is for us as a board to meet to discuss, you know, to the degree that people wish to discuss what they, you know, their ratings, things like that. We have not been able to come to a, uh, an agreement on what day to do that. So I was hoping that tonight, either in closed session or at some point, uh, within the next day or two, we could get everybody to, um, agree, you know, commit to a date and time. Um, I don't expect this to take a long time, um, given the amount of work everybody's already done, but, that said, I, you know, I don't know, and this is an open question, is it, is it required that we meet to actually have that conversation? Because otherwise, we could, we could finalize the thing and get it done.
We can discuss, it's on my items.
Okay. Nope, not at all, thank you.
Um, so items for discussion, um, board members attending the NSBA Conference, April fourth through April sixth. We have had two board members express, um, interest in attending. This is like our triple I, but it's the national conference. So that will be coming up for a vote later in our meeting. And then discussion to schedule a special board meeting for the superintendent evaluation. The doodle was sent out, and we have not been able to line up everybody. I would like to get this done in March, so, um, I don't know if anybody wants to look at dates now. We can get back to each other, but really pick every option that's available, so we can all try and line up. I know that we don't have two board members here tonight, um, so, uh, maybe another doodle can go out, but we would, I would really like to get this done. It's hard, I know we're busy, but it, like Mr. Romo said, it should not take very long.
Or else it's worse, we could do it in closed session. And that would be, that would be for a longer meeting, but that's an option too.
Perhaps, yes. Okay, uh, Dr. Alvarez, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six caregiver handbook?
The CAC looked over the caregiver handbook, um, it was then handed to me as I looked through, um, the caregiver handbook, and then now it's, it's ready to go. It was shared with the board, um, so it's, it's good to go.
All right, Dr. Hubbard, uh, now that I got all excited for Mr. Lyons, let's hear about this FY twenty-five quarter two financial report.
I don't know how exciting it's gonna be, but good, good evening. Couple things to talk to you, one's the financial report, the other is the school calendar, and then last is Cook County paid leave ordinance. Uh, for the quarter two financial report, you'd see that we started off the quarter with about thirty-four point four million dollars, and ended the quarter at thirty point one million dollars, and that's on point. We normally spend about one point two to one point five million per month in basically salaries and other expenses. So right on point for that. What is different this year is that we got about fifty percent of our, our revenue right at the beginning of the school year, where that hasn't happened in the past like four or five years. Uh, so we're expecting another payment in the next month or so. Um, so then we get our revenue, and you'll see what that looks like. But on the next slide, as you always like to see, where we are, if we did not get any more revenue in, and what it looks like. So in the green shows you where we are currently in terms of months. We could sustain without receiving any more revenue. I know there's been some concern with the federal government holding some of their money and then releasing some of it. That only counts for about six point three, six four point four percent of our revenue, so not that much. So it really wouldn't affect us as much as it affects some other districts where it's a large portion of their budget. Um, but we got some pretty hefty balances where we could sustain for quite some time, so. Any questions regarding the finances? What I will, the last thing, I'm sorry, would say about the finances. So we, like I mentioned, we've got about fifty percent of our revenue in, and we expended probably about sixty percent of our projected expenses for the year. So, we're, still have a higher fund balance than we did at the end of last year, so we're in good point. We might most likely end with another surplus this year. In terms of the school calendar, the first day is August nineteenth, and the last day would be May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-six. Sounds like so far away, but it is very close. Um, winter break and spring breaks do allowing, align with surrounding districts. Um, we have six days of professional development and four days of early dismissal for school improvement, professional development. Some of the feedback that we did get was that parents would like a separate calendar because there's too much information on our calendar that really doesn't pertain to them. So we did do that, so the calendar, uh, and with the blue and the pink on it, it just shows the days off really, because that's all parents really ask for. So we have two versions, one for staff, which has a lot about the grades, when grades are due, when meetings are, and parents like, this is all great information, but it's really all for teachers. Um, so we took some of that information off and just gave them the calendar, which is most important to them when their school is and when their school is not in session.
Is both calendars still gonna be available online?
Yes, they're both reposted on the website, so, um, you have access to them. But we just wanted to make sure that there was two versions, because that was something that they did ask for. Any questions regarding?
Can you share with them about the, uh, election on that year?
Oh, yes, um, so March seventeenth is, uh, election. Um, so we had to move our TI day to that date, so we could accommodate that. So it was one of the requests from the Teachers Union, I believe?
I don't think they had a request. Yeah, they, they didn't, they were okay either way. Um, but it is for governor, not for president, obviously, um, because for president, we would have to take off. But so, seeing that we don't have children, we could at least have our TI, Teacher Institute Day, and still have polling happening.
Any, anything else about the count? And last but not least, um, Cook County paid leave ordinance. Um, we're asked that the board attorney come up and speak on that on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Nice to see everyone. All right, um, I don't have any fancy slides like the finance report to talk about the paid leave ordinance, but, so the Cook County paid leave ordinance, you may have heard of it. Um, this is an ordinance passed by the commissioners that is separate from a similar state law that was passed a couple of years earlier, the Illinois Paid Leave Work for Worker, for All Workers Act. And that state law that was passed a couple of years ago specifically exempted school districts and park districts from its mandate. That's why you haven't heard of it or its applicability to the school district, okay? When Cook County kind of, you know, mirrored that law within Cook County, obviously, it was widely expected that school districts and park districts would be exempted as well because we already offer generous leave to our employees for the most part. That didn't happen despite a hard legislative push from school districts, from lobbyists. School districts and park districts were not exempted from this ordinance. And what this ordinance does is for every hour, or I'm sorry, for every forty hours that you work, you earn one hour of paid leave, okay? Up to a maximum of forty hours of paid leave. Now, that leave has to be used just like vacation. There can't be really any strings attached to it. And there are many caveats about this ordinance. The first was that it actually went into effect in December of twenty twenty-three, but there was such pushback by schools, they delayed it a year, so it finally took effect January one, twenty twenty-five, okay? So this ordinance is applicable to Cook County school districts, is applicable to Cook County park districts, right? Now, there's a lot of nuances, you can imagine, but the, the kind of moral of the story is if you do not receive vacation or PTO at that amount right now, this kind of fills that in, okay? And you earn it, you can either earn it upfront, a school district, or a park district could say, hey, here's forty hours right off the bat, right? Or you can earn as you go. And for some categories of employees, it makes sense that you just front-load them, right? Your, your administrative office staff who you know is gonna work, you know, forty, you know, they're gonna earn this amount because they're working so many hours throughout the course of the year. But for like a substitute teacher, right, it may not make a lot of sense because they're sporadically working, okay? Long story short is, there are many ways to accrue this leave, there are many ways to track it. Who it applies to, teachers it does not apply to currently because they're under a collective bargaining agreement. So we're just talking about really your office staff, parapros substitutes, um, who would be subject to this ordinance as it is. All right. Why I'm talking to you now is, we have been in communication with the Village of Forest Park about opting you out of this ordinance, okay? That they have the authority under the Illinois Constitution to obviously adopt ordinances. And whenever an ordinance of any municipality, whether it's a home rule municipality or a non-home rule municipality like Forest Park, that if their ordinance conflicts, right, with the county ordinance, the municipality's ordinance controls, and that's in the Constitution. So we've had much success talking to our municipalities about, hey, will you opt us out? Because we give you all these benefits or give these benef, leave benefits to our employees. Same reason, same rationale that we were opted out of the state law, we're asking the municipalities to do it, you know, on their own. So we've been in communication with the Village of Forest Park. They've asked for some additional information to essentially see who this would affect, right? What employees are we talking about to give them a better understanding? So we're still doing that right now. If they don't opt you out, it's not the end of the world. It's just gonna be somewhat of an administrative burden to track these substitutes, to track some of these employees and give them this leave. But we're still talking to them, uh, if they do, if they do not opt you out, you'll adopt a policy. It'll spell this out, kind of how you would accrue, and how you would use it, um, how it would carry over for some employees, and, you know, you'd implement it. But right now, there's, there's not a whole heck of a lot of risk, um, just because of how slowly it accrues, right? Like, at this point, we're only seven weeks in, eight weeks in to the year that would, in which it took effect. So you're talking at most, you know, seven or eight hours of paid leave that's been earned by your non-exempt employees, so. That's kind of where it sits. John?
Does this, is it a use it or lose it type of policy, or is it paid out at the end of the year if you don't use it?
So it's not paid out at the end of the year, okay? And for some people, it can carry over, okay? For the people that, that it accrues on like an accrual basis, it carries over. For the people you front-load, it doesn't carry over. For the people you front load, it doesn't carry over. So there is an ability for it to carry over, but it's not like vacation as you and I know it, where if I leave, where's my PTO time? That's not how this works. You just carry it over to use later.
So are they allowed to accumulate year over year as well too?
They are allowed to carry over up to 40 hours.
Okay.
So up to a week.
How far, so they can carry 40 hours over, but they carry it over, like that's as far as they can go if?
Correct. You can't carry over 80 hours. Like it's 40 hours from year to year that you could carry over at the most.
And beyond that, they would lose it?
Correct.
How many employees does this affect? Oh, okay.
You have 160 employees. So it could potentially, so right now, it doesn't impact your teachers, which is your largest group of employees. It could, you know, ultimately, depending on how, what the county, or I'm sorry, what the county does, but also what, because there's still momentum to make exceptions for schools. But what the village does and then how you bargain, because one of the exemptions from this is if it's expressly bargained in a collective bargaining agreement and the union waives its right to this, then they'd be out of it. They can like essentially exempt themselves in return for something else.
You, I think, I thought I heard you say earlier when you were doing your presentation on this, that if we don't already offer them paid time off, that's when this would apply. So for example, for the teachers right now under their current agreement, we offer it so it doesn't really, it's a bargainable thing in the future, but it's not something we'd have to worry about now.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about it now because they're covered under a collective bargaining agreement. So what the ordinance says is that, look, if bargaining agreements that are in effect, we're not going to make you redo them, right, and include this. But if you don't offer enough essentially PTO, i.e. personal days for teachers, it could apply to them. But there is some workings within the county right now at the county level where they're going to, they're trying to somewhat manipulate the leave benefits to kind of even it out, right? They're saying like if you give 10 vacation, because there's a proposed amendment to this ordinance, that if you gave a certain amount of sick days in conjunction with a certain amount of personal days and you allowed some of those sick days to be used like personal days, you'd be exempted. For instance, if I gave you 12 sick days and three personal days, but I allowed you to use two of those sick days as personal days, which gets you to the five or the 40 hours, you'd be exempted.
So we don't really know how that's going to sort of?
So we don't know how that's going to shake out.
So we can't even say like how many people are affected?
It's hard, yes. It's very hard. And so Robert and Dr. Alvarez did a nice job getting information to get to the village, but it's hard to really say who this would impact at any given moment, right? Like who's in the bargaining unit, who's out of the bargaining unit? Like what you can really do is just give them a sense of how many employees, their work year, right? So you can see who's going to hit this benchmark and do those people already get some form of leave, which is gives you kind of a ballpark estimate.
And we didn't even know that yet because to your point, they're still trying to figure out what that looks like.
Correct.
Thank you.
Adam, can you share, how many municipalities have included their district? Do you know how many?
I don't know how many. I mean, there has been a decent amount that have opted their school districts and park districts out, mostly because they understand the leave benefits that we provide, right? Like this isn't your typical like small business within the municipality where people may not be accruing leave benefits. You know, teachers and, you know, those who work at a park district or public employees, like you get a kind of a generous leave package relatively speaking to the private sector. So that's why the state, you know, kind of self, you know, did this on its own, said, look, we don't need to do this already. Like there's already these benefits available. It was really focused on private employers. So municipalities have run with that in my experience, but it's hard to say. I mean, there's so many municipalities, like the actual number, but I'd say, you know, a lot of them have done that. Yeah.
Is the concern for the village not to do it is because they could be lumped in to this as well? Or do they have to write the ordinance to specifically call the school districts and the park districts amended or opted out of this?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and there's kind of two parts to that. One is I've sent the village a proposed ordinance to, you know, this is how you would do it or this is what it would look like, given what other municipalities have done. So they have that. And they've also taken action, the village has, the Village of Forest Park has, to opt out their employees from this ordinance. So they've taken action to address kind of their employees. And so we're just kind of at this point saying, hey, look, we can do the same thing. But, you know, to be fair, they have a better sense of what their employees get, right, than what our employees have. So they're probably better positioned to, you know, adjudicate what happens with their employees leave. But and that's what we're trying to kind of prove up right now, like, hey, like our people are getting kind of the same thing. So. Anything else? I'll bring slides.
May I have a motion to invite Mr. Stephen Elfinger into closed session?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks? Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Cotton? Oh, sorry. Ms. Wood?
Aye. May I have a motion to invite Ms. Amy Mills into closed session?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks? Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye. And then may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees and litigation?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Okay, we are back in open session. Number 11, approval of consent agenda items discussed in closed session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Discussion and it's as we discussed in closed session. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye. Number 12, recommendation to approve two-day unpaid suspension for Stephen Elfinger. May I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Discussion as discussed in closed session. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye. So number 13, can I have a motion to remove the recommendation to approve board members attending NSBA conference 44 through 46?
So moved.
A second? And a roll call.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye. Okay. Under Dr. Alvarez, we have recommendation to adopt board policies 5:90, Maintaining Student Discipline, 5:230, Abused and Neglected Child Reporting, and 6:60, Curriculum Content. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Discussion.
These were the ones that we did last year, so we were going to keep them the same.
May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Number two, recommendation to adopt board policy 6:45, the artificial intelligence policy. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion.
This is the, where am I at? Recommendation, oh, the AI policy. We just added a couple of things into it. Again, next time around, we'll be putting this up again.
Roll call?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye. Number three, recommendation to adopt board policy press bundle 117. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is the rest of the bundle, taking those others out, that we were going to go with press.
Roll call?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye. And number four, recommendation to approve 2025-2026 caregiver handbook. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is just a completed caregiver handbook now.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye. And then under C, Dr. Hubbard, recommendation to adopt the SY 25-26 Public School Calendar. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Just as we spoke earlier, the calendar for next school year.
Roll call?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Angelo?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
And Ms. Wood?
Aye. Number 14, additional matters for consideration from the board? Good.
I want to say thank you to everyone from the CAC committee. It was the first time we have met in years together as a unit in a group forum prior to COVID, and I just that it was a, it was just an enriching experience. So everyone that was involved, thank you very much for attending and contributing to the handbook and the calendar. It's much appreciated.
Do you want to mention those dates too?
Which dates are you talking about? Oh, yes. Excuse me. Let's see here. Library Representative Ms. Sullivan shared an upcoming virtual high school election forum scheduled on March 18th at 7:00 PM. That provides an opportunity for community engagement. And Proviso Representative Ms. Hobbs shared that Proviso East has reached a commendable status with attendance and student behavior showing improvement. So thank you so much for Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Hobbs. We appreciate you.
I'll just say, be safe, keep warm, wash your hands. A lot of sicknesses going around from personal experience.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day. D91 loves you. All right, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is now 8:28 and our meeting is adjourned.